...twenty nineteen, we will call the board of the State, the City of Statesboro City Council meeting, uh, we will have our implication players of allegiance by Councilman Dean Boyd.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we can go ahead, please. Dear Lord, I was returning from Florida yesterday to help my family. I saw that you were sending dozens and dozens of first responders into the eye of the storm. Be with those folks as they set up and get ready for the catastrophe that's about to hit our southern states and be with all our first responders here in the area as they prepare for and deal with the situation at hand. Sometimes it feels like we're driving into the eye of the storm and help us to make good decisions that will not only be sound decisions, but those that will help, uh, those in the most need. In your name we pray. Amen.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me this time. This is Black Form. Um, with me today is, through one of our great partnerships with our local workforce postal program, Ms. Nakai Canty, who is assisting our office in the regional technical college of the education program, giving out some information for you. Again, thank you, Ma'am Calla, for this opportunity. My name is Samantha Smith. I'm the Dean of Adult Education at a regional technical college. Um, to say that I love what I do is truly an understatement. I absolutely love serving the students and the families of our communities. As we get ready to prepare, as Councilman Boyd said about getting ready to prepare for the impending weather, it takes my mind to the individuals who may be sitting at home in a position where they're not really sure where to go, they're not really sure what to do, and one of the main things that pengers them is the fact that they are not able to read. You will be very surprised at the individuals that you're sitting next to in doctor's offices, in church, in the grocery store, who cannot read their medication labels, who cannot read directions on the road, and who unfortunately aren't even able to read the Bible. So, our program, the Adult Education Program at a regional technical college, serves these individuals, not just high school dropouts. Let me say that again. We do not just serve high school dropouts, but we serve the families of students that attend our schools here in Bullock County. We serve the grandparents that are raising their children's children. We serve the children who, for whatever reason, did not navigate the school system in a, in a more positive light. We serve anyone, even with high school credentials, that just aren't in need of increasing their skills, for whatever reason, they're trying to get better jobs, or they're trying to enter into the workforce. One of the things I'm focusing on mostly this year is our incarcerated community, those individuals who are returning to society with low-level skills. Um, I meet young men every day that their only job has been hustling on the street, and they're thirty years old. Um, they have children, they are in different programs in our community, trying to get a footing back into the community so that they can be productive citizens. And so that is one of my main focuses this year, on top of the other duties that I have. I presented you some information, um, from the Adult Education Program, just outlining the services that we provide. Um, as you can see, we are all over Bullock County in the sense of, we have great partnerships with our local Statesboro Regional Libraries, where we're able to have classes there at night. We have great partnerships, as I said before, with our Workforce Coastal, who send us students that are in need of our services, and as always, we're working with our main campus in Statesboro, helping students transition from getting that GED to now becoming productive citizens and getting the training that they need in order to get full-time jobs that are changing the face and changing their entire families and their communities. So, in your, um, thoughts on next week, as we do celebrate and we, uh, recognize the Adult Education and Family Literacy Week, September eighth through the fourteenth, please remember those individuals who are in need of additional skills, who are in need of additional training, and who might need that additional support to just have the courage to come and say, "I do need help." So again, thank you, Ma'am Calla, for this opportunity, and, um, I wish everyone safety over these next few days, or families in the various areas and communities that they need to live in. Thank you.
You know, I definitely want, uh, first, we need to the proclamation, thank you and the staff for all the work you do out at OTC. OTC is definitely a jewel within this community, uh, because it definitely opens pathways for individuals that may have taken a little longer, a longer timeframe to get to understand what they want to do with their careers. But I do want to read this proclamation, uh, to celebrate the work of you and the staff out there does. Um, a proclamation by the mayor and city council of Statesboro, Georgia, Adult Education and Family Literacy Week, whereas approximately thirty-two million Americans cannot read or write, and in Georgia alone, roughly one point one million individuals over the age of eighteen have not completed high school or received a general educational development certificate. And whereas literacy rates are typically the lowest in ethnically disadvantaged communities, these low literacy rates often correlate with high unemployment rates, high crime rates, and welfare dependency. And whereas by promoting adult education and family literacy, we can ensure that all Georgia parents are prepared to help their children learn to read medicine bottles, navigate public transportation, practice cooperative, uh, comparative shopping, make correct change, and complete homework for school. And whereas increasing public awareness of literacy rates can elevate illiteracy, and low literacy rates among adults may also be countered by supporting and strengthening workplace, school, and volunteer literacy programs on the local, state, and national levels. Now therefore, I, Jonathan McCullough, mayor of the City of Statesboro, do hereby proclaim September eighth through the fourteenth, twenty nineteen, as Adult Education and Family Literacy Week in Georgia. In, in witness thereof, I have heretofore to sign my hand and cause the seal of the City of Statesboro to be affixed this third day of September in the year of our Lord, two thousand and nineteen. Thank you.
Uh-oh, okay, uh-oh.
Mr. Mayor, if I could say a few words, uh, just to say a thank you. I was raised by a father who could not read. I had a half-brother that could not read, I had a half-sister that could not read. Thank you for what you do. People like you helped them, they led productive, happy, and, uh, had a place in society. It's because of someone like yourself, so thank you so much for what you do, and do all we can to support.
All right. We'll move down to agenda item three B, uh, and three C, which is recognition of the Finance Department for receiving the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the City of Statesboro's FYI, FY twenty eighteen comprehensive annual financial report. And C is recognition of the Finance Department for receiving the Government Finance Officers Association Award for Outstanding Achievement and Popular Annual Financial, Financial Reporting for the City of Statesboro FY twenty eighteen Popular Achievement and Popular Annual Financial Report. Ms. Singer, if you would come forward, please, and, and talk to us a little bit about this great, this great information.
Ms. Singer, I'm just trying to, um, the comprehensive annual financial report is, we submit to the Government Finance Officers Association. This is our fourteenth, it's our fourteenth year of submitting this award, and this one year, twenty seventeen, um, there were four thousand three hundred and twenty eight participants across the United States and Canada that have received an award. Um, in order to submit it, there's special sort of criteria that has to be in it. Uh, one thing that we do is a statistical section and a standard work of information on various aspects of the city. And just to give you an idea of what kind of entities submit or can submit awards, including municipalities, counties, school districts, authorities, and even special districts can submit their financial reports. So, um, we won a four thousand three hundred, uh, number, that's, uh, I think we need to have for us.
Good. Well, Ms. Singer, I think we got something right here that we want to show the people.
The rest of the Finance Department, please.
All right, congratulations. Thank you.
Um, with the final annual financial report, this is our third year of submitting that award. Um, in order to even to be able to submit that award, you have to submit a cap. So, it's still the same criteria as far as, um, it is actually judged when you get a score. So, if we've got a, we have to give a seventy-five percent in order to get the award. We are one of four hundred and forty-eight entities to submit and, um, get the award. It's, um, not a lot of entities submit, so we are proud to get this one as well.
It's nice, well, well, yeah. This is good. A lot of things you want to keep in order, the financial house is one of them.
And, um, what's the financial, what's that word?
Yeah. All right. Uh, we'll move down to agenda item four for public comments. Ms. Singer, we didn't have any more side of the public comments.
Okay.
All right, we'll move down to agenda item five, which is consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda, uh, which include, approve, include approval minutes of August twentieth, council meeting, uh, council minutes, August twenty-seventh, public hearing minutes, and then, uh, August twenty-seventh, public hearing minutes with the way. Um, also, we have, uh, consideration of a motion to approve the due date of December twentieth, twenty nineteen, for the City of Statesboro property taxes, uh, as well as agenda item C, which is consideration of a motion to disclose surplus equipment and quarters with the city's purchasing policies, section three, vehicle and equipment surplus and disposal. Is there a motion to approve? All those in favor? Uh, we'll move down to agenda item five, I mean, six, which is public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen twenty-nine, a resolution setting the military forever on.
I'm sorry, there's no.
For what?
I, I, I was speaking, I'm sorry.
Okay. Are we good to go?
Yes.
Okay, good to go. All right. Uh, agenda item six, which is the public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty-nine, a resolution setting the military forever on property taxes for twenty nineteen, accounting to yield for the City of Statesboro at seven point three oh eight. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Uh, is there anyone here to speak for the request? Is there anyone here to speak against? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Somebody.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Is there any discussion by council? All right, seeing that there's no discussion by council, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Is there any discussion by council? All right, seeing that there's no discussion by council, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right. We'll move down to agenda item seven, which is public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve application for the alcohol license section six dash five. Um, uh, agenda item eight is the hangout, we're going to sell us Allen, sixty-seven Gala Drive, Statesboro, Georgia, three zero four five eight. Um, and D is Southern City Lounge, Asher Hunter and Jason Williams, uh, twenty-five West Main Street, Statesboro, Georgia. Um, we will open it up, uh, is there a motion to do so?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right. All right, uh, for line item eight, plenty of zone.
No issues there.
No issues? Okay, fire any expenses, but.
No issues.
Okay. All right, Chief.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, as it relates to, uh, Mr. Allen's establishment at the, uh, the hangout with the police department, posting his license.
Okay. You'll give us a little against that chief?
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor. Council, uh, you have in your package a couple of memorandum and some call sheets that show the, uh, level of police activity required at the hangout over the last twelve months or so, from about August until June when the license expired. Uh, they currently do not have a license. Uh, we had a number of incidents there, uh, I think we wrote about thirteen police reports there. Uh, six of those were for acts of criminal behavior that involved some level of violence, either in the establishment or in the parking lot. Uh, one of those was a shooting. Uh, we had less than a cooperative management team at the hangout, and we were trying to investigate that shooting. A particular concern to me personally is that, um, you know, we found out at some point during the year that, or became aware that the management team there did not have bouncer permits as required by law. I personally spoke to Mr. Allen on the phone at length about that. We gave him about a month, nobody came in to get bouncer permits during that time. Uh, we went up there and inspected the premises when we were open, and, uh, wrote ten citations to the staff there for not having bouncer permits. Uh, so, so this, this lack of cooperation from management, when we know we have an establishment that's, that's creating difficulties for us, is quite troubling to us. Um, they were caught one time during the year, serving after hours, uh, Mr. Allen, you know, again, he's pretty responsive, I call him on the phone, but, but the management who's on scene there, Mr. Allen doesn't live in community, um, but he has an onsite manager, they were not very cooperative with us over the past year, and so we opposed that license, making issue for that.
Okay. Chief, we'll make this up available, show counsel discussion in case counsel asks any questions. All right. Uh, city attorney?
Um, no legal bars, but would, uh, are repeating successfully.
Okay. All right, is there anyone here to speak for this request? All right, is there anyone here that wants to speak against this request? Uh-oh. Thank you. Thank you. Chief, we'll make this up available, show counsel discussion in case counsel asks any questions. All right. Uh, city attorney?
Um, no legal bars, but would, uh, are repeating successfully.
Okay. All right, is there anyone here to speak for this request? All right, is there anyone here that wants to speak against this request? Uh-oh. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, city attorney?
Um, no legal bars, but would, uh, are repeating successfully.
Okay. All right, is there anyone here to speak for this request? All right, is there anyone here that wants to speak against this request? Uh-oh. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could say a few words, uh, just to say a thank you. I was raised by a father who could not read. I had a half-brother that could not read, I had a half-sister that could not read. Thank you for what you do. People like you helped them, they led productive, happy, and, uh, had a place in society. And it's because of someone like yourself, so thank you so much for what you do, and do all we can to support.
All right. We'll move down to agenda item three B, uh, and three C, which is recognition of the Finance Department for receiving the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the City of Statesboro's FYI, FY twenty eighteen comprehensive annual financial report. And C is recognition of the Finance Department for receiving the Government Finance Officers Association Award for Outstanding Achievement in Popular Annual Financial, Financial Reporting for the City of Statesboro FY twenty eighteen Popular Achievement and Popular Annual Financial Report. Ms. Singer, if you would come forward, please, and, and talk to us a little bit about this great, this great information.
Ms. Singer, I'm just trying to, um, the comprehensive annual financial report is, we submit to the Government Finance Officers Association. This is our fourteenth, it's our fourteenth year of submitting this award, and this one year, twenty seventeen, um, there were four thousand three hundred and twenty eight participants across the United States and Canada that have received an award. Um, in order to submit it, there's special sort of criteria that has to be in it. Uh, one thing that we do is a statistical section and a standard work of information on various aspects of the city. And just to give you an idea of what kind of entities submit or can submit awards, including municipalities, counties, school districts, authorities, and even special districts can submit their financial reports. So, um, we won a four thousand three hundred, uh, number, that's, uh, I think we need to have for us.
Good. Well, Ms. Singer, I think we got something right here that we want to show the people.
The rest of the Finance Department, please.
All right, congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. So, what I'm, so what I'm, yeah, I know, right? Come get in. All right, congratulations. Thank you. So, what I'm, so what I'm, yeah, I know, right? Go ahead.
Um, with the final annual financial report, this is our third year of submitting that award. Um, in order to even to be able to submit that award, you have to submit a cap. So, it's still the same criteria as far as, um, it is actually judged, and we get a score. So, if we've got a, we have to give a seventy-five percent in order to get the award. We are one of four hundred and forty-eight entities to submit and, um, get the award. It's, um, not a lot of entities submit, so we are proud to get this one as well.
It's nice, well, well, yeah. This is good. A lot of things you want to keep in order, the financial house is one of them.
And, um, what's the financial, what's that word?
Yeah. That's a good question, that's actually, that's fine. All right. Uh, we'll move down to agenda item four for public comments. Ms. Singer, we didn't have any more side of the public comments.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll move down to agenda item five, which is consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda, uh, which include, approve, include approval minutes of August twentieth, council meeting, uh, council minutes, August twenty-seventh, public hearing minutes, and then, uh, August twenty-seventh, public hearing minutes with the way. Um, also, we have, uh, consideration of a motion to approve the due date of December twentieth, twenty nineteen, for the City of Statesboro property taxes, uh, as well as agenda item C, which is consideration of a motion to disclose the surplus equipment and quarters with the city's purchasing policies, section three, vehicle and equipment surplus and disposal. Is there a motion to approve?
Sure.
All those in favor?
All right.
Uh, we'll move down to agenda item five, I mean, six, which is public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen twenty-nine, a resolution setting the military forever on.
I'm sorry, there's no.
For what?
I, I, I was speaking, I'm sorry, I'm tired.
Okay. Are we good to go?
Yes.
Okay, good to go. All right. Uh, agenda item six, which is the public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty-nine, a resolution setting the military forever on property taxes for twenty nineteen, counting the year for the City of Statesboro at seven point three oh eight. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right, is there any council discussion?
Mr. Mayor, will you have the witness, proof, come back and identify himself fully as to who he is, where he lives, and how he governs his business?
Who's that?
I'm sorry, sir. My name is Von Sully Allen. Um, I currently reside in Kansas City, Georgia. Um, I do have a management team here locally, uh, as far as running my bar here. I have two bars in the dust area as well. Um, not, no issues like this whatsoever. Um, I, I'm at the liberty of using the police department and the sheriff department in Missouri County. Unfortunately, we, Statesboro don't allow that. Um, so that's why I try to make sure I have about ten security guards every night, which is a lot of my revenue going towards paying for security to make sure my meeting is safe and, um, to be polite and make sure I'm happy.
Any further questions, comments for council?
Yeah, I was just curious why, uh, why did you let your existing license lapse?
Um, it was a mishap on me as far as being a day late, um.
Who's that?
I'm sorry. There was a mishap, um, as far as being a day late, as far as here, plus not knowing that they changed it to where you have to have certain liability limits as well. Um, so, with the new changes, they said I abandoned mine by being one day late because I had, I was out of grid out of country, um, on everything. Fortunately, I tried to rush back to get here on time, and they said, basically, I abandoned my license by being one day late. But they seen the process, you were starting back here, man.
Any further questions for council? Uh, any questions?
Yes, sir.
You said that the parking lot is, uh, being utilized, you'll hang out alone, addition to another.
Yes, sir.
What's the name of the venue that you live in?
Um, I guess, Social Bar, somewhere like that.
You also mentioned that the, uh, after hour deal, that was one minute late from the municipal court, you know?
Yes, they were saying that, the rules were that you have to stop certain, look at one and have to have everybody out of the building by a certain time, and the particular gentleman put two oh one at a time, saying that we have one person in there past two o'clock, and, you know, that goes with, not the other stuff I have some issues with, but I guess we won't get into that today, but, you know.
How about the limit, some of the, 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 wasn't aware that City of Statesboro changed their liability, um, now that you are aware of it, have you made an adjustment?
Yes, sir, I got anything, ready. All my thoughts will be on the agenda last time. Heard some different stories about that, or why I wasn't. I don't agree with that either, but I'm here now, so I move forward.
Did you check, Mr. Allen? Any further discussions, my count?
Did I, excuse me, did I understand you to say you have all the legal requirements for this now, you have the liability as of this month?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, my count? Mr. Allen, getting his steps in today. I said, you're getting your steps in too.
All right, all right.
All right, uh, seeing that there's no further discussion by council, is there a motion to close the hearing? To move? Oh, my, my bad, I'm sorry. Is there a motion, is there, is there a motion to, uh, to approve the request? Is there a motion to deny the request?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right, we'll move down to.
My's a lady.
Yours a man.
You know, and I guess I was thinking of the fact that, uh, I appreciate Mr. Allen's verbal response, but I'd like to table and do a written response. You know, it sounds busy, it's not like he has justifiable reasons why he should give
My business is very safe. I have more security department than any other venue out around here. Unfortunately, things happened and one of them was the shooting outside. Of course, the cops were able to apprehend the gentleman. But as far as what he just said, as far as serving hours is not true either. We had a gentleman that said we stayed in here. Customer coming out one minute past the time, which the municipal just threw their case out totally. So as far as trying to make my business seem like it's a hazard or that there's a lot of violations going on, that's not totally true. Plus, I do share a parking lot with another bar that seems to not be labeled as both our parking lot, just always being a hangout parking lot. So I just want to make that clear.
Mr. Allen, make sure you fully identify.
Counselor, do we do any more? Make yourself available.
I'm sure it's about.
All right, is there anyone here to speak against the request? All right. Seeing as there's no one that gives us before or against, is our motion to close the hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, is there any counsel discussion?
Mr. Mayor, will you have the witness proof come back and identify himself fully as to who he is, where he lives, and how he governs his business?
Who's there?
My name is Von Sully Allen. I currently reside in Hepsburg, Georgia. I do have a management team here locally as far as running my bar here. I have two bars in the Duster area as well. Not, no issues like this whatsoever. Now, I'm at the liberty of using the police department and the sheriff department in Richmond County. Unfortunately, the state's don't allow that. So that's why I try to make sure I have about ten security guards every night, which is a lot of my revenue going towards paying for security to make sure my business is safe and to be polite and make sure I'm happy.
Any further questions, comments for counsel?
Yeah, I was just curious why, uh, why did you let your existing license lapse?
Um, it was a mishap on me as far as being a day late.
Who's there?
I'm sorry. It was a mishap, um, as far as being a day late, as far as here, plus not knowing that they changed it to where you have to have certain liability limits as well. So with the new changes, they're saying I abandoned mine by being one day late because I had, I was out of grid out of country. When everything, most of the time, I tried to rush back to get here on time. And they said, basically, I abandoned my license by being one day late. But they seen the process you started back here, man.
Any further questions for counsel? What question?
Yes, sir.
You said that the parking lot is being utilized, you'll hang out alone, listen to another.
Yes, sir.
What's the name of the venue that you live in?
Um, I guess Social Bar somewhere.
You also mentioned that the after hour deal was that one minute late from the municipal court.
Yes, they were saying that the rules were that you have to stop serving at one and have to have everybody out of the building by a certain time. And the particular gentleman put two oh one at the time, saying that we have one person in there past two o'clock. And, you know, that goes with a lot of other stuff I have some issues with, but I guess we won't get into that today, but, you know.
How about the limits under the, you said that people wasn't aware that City State's going to change their liability limit? Now that you are aware of it, have you made an adjustment?
Yes, sir, I got anything ready. Are my thoughts on the agenda last time? Heard some different stories about that, or why I wasn't. I don't agree with that either, but I'm here now, so I move forward.
Is there, Mr. Allen? Any further discussions, my counsel?
Did I, excuse me, did I understand you to say you have all the legal requirements for this now? You have the liability as of this moment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any further questions, my counsel? So Allen getting his steps in today. I said, you're getting your steps in too.
All right.
All right, seeing as there's no further discussion by counsel, is there a motion to close the hearing? To move? Oh, my, my bad, I'm sorry. Is there a motion, is there, is there a motion to, uh, to approve the request? Is there a motion to deny the request?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
We move down to.
Mine's a lady.
Yours a man?
And I guess I was thinking of the fact that, uh, I appreciate Mr. Allen's verbal response, but I'd like to table it to get rid of his response. Sound busy, sound like he has to justify all the reasons why he should give his license, as well as the police department. I have, I personally like to, I hear, and I also like to see in writing his justification before I make the final decision.
All right, currently right now, the vote is.
It's down.
Yeah, the, the, well, the vote is three to one. Um, they're putting a motion to send the vote and table this matter for another time. Is there a motion to do so?
I mean, the motion could be tabled.
Is there a second? Am I saying that there is?
I want to be clear when I understand. I have no problem agreeing to the table if the chief says, Mr. Allen, this is it. The problem is, as the next to their perspective.
Okay, so can we, can we use this time frame to find that out? If we, uh, if, if the counsel sold.
May I ask the chief? Chief, is there, within this table period, is there an opportunity for the challenge to come within compliance from your, your office's perspective?
I, I, I'm not sure what he would come into compliance with us for, other than he has to work with the city clerk's office to make sure his insurance bidder is correct, and then we would simply have to make sure that his staff, you know, has the proper permits. But that would be, you know, that would be variable based upon the date that he's opening with staff he's working. So we're happy to work with Mr. Allen on, on trying to make his business, uh, you know, a, a driving partner of mine, but he's going to have to work with us and not at odds with us and not always be, it's always one day late, one minute late. We, we see him being compliant with our ordinances.
Yep. One question.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir.
Do you think, obviously, you are, you not being here personally, do you think you can see to it that the management that comes into compliance or comes into failure with the chief and you?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I want to make this clear if I can. There's not a lot of, I don't want y'all to think that my place is just a, uh, a, a, a nest egg for bad things. I've not been written up anything. I had security guards written up for, and I have that forty dollar certificate that it was went online, and I outsourced to a different company. Of course, they, ultimately, it's my responsibility, I understand that. But I don't, I don't want to be pictured that it's just unsafe to be in the hangout, because that's definitely not the case. And I'm willing, I met with the chief personally, myself. I will make sure that I have my people in line to make sure they work with the police department here. That's no problem at all, that's an easy fix. I just think that the level of what, you know, just people worried can get this, this machine sometimes as far as when they wanted to get a copy of a film that we didn't have. And I don't think they understood that at that particular point. Was set the, the tone bad between the two. And I just have to be the liaison between the two groups together.
Is there any, is, is there any question that we should be asking, or something that we should be able to?
Mayor, looking at counsel, I would, I'd suggest that the counsel is on the table on the matter, uh, that it would give the police department a little more time to, the gentleman identified that there's another facility right next door to this facility. Uh, in the same way, the police department provide a report as calls for service to the hangout. It'd be good to see the comparison of the hangout versus the, the bar that sits right next door, so you have the total, all the information to make a decision before, um, you make a part of the decision in the counsel's consulting table.
All right, so we go back to the matter that's, that's on hand. Um, we do, do we have a second to rescind and table?
I'll say. If I can make a comment, Mayor. I, I will caution us though, that, uh, you know, I, I lived through the entire Gatto case, and, uh, the issues we've had with establishments in the past have never been one incident, one thing. We, we have, when I say we, I mean, the city, we haven't shut anybody down for one thing. When you've gone back and look at it, a little bit of this, it's a little bit of that, it's a little bit of this absentee owner, poor management, you know, going over hours, violating the law, not getting their share. You start putting that all together, and any one thing, you can, you can nitpick one particular item and focus on that, but when you start putting it together, it starts to become a, a picture. And so, you know, the chief has not recommended we deny any license before. I think we need to take that into serious consideration. I don't think he recommends no lightly. And so, you know, these are, these are public safety professionals, and we need to take that into consideration. But again, I'm not suggesting we, you know, that we, uh, I'm not telling you guys how to vote, I'm, I'm just saying from a, from a past perspective, when we've had issues with establishments, it's never anything big. It's always been a pile of little things, and then something terrible happens. And the last thing we need, considering, uh, the state university, the state of the foundation, things of those nature, and I've mentioned the, the availability of information and news that's out there. Last thing we need is in an event like this, or a bad event, that, that those states work itself on that one.
Okay, so, so you do want a second?
I did second.
Okay, yeah, okay. All right, so all those in favor, uh, to rescind the table? All right. All those vote?
Nay.
Nay.
Let's, um, uh, I'm in favor. So let's table it, send it, we come back, revisit it, and then give a better understanding. Chief, give us, let us know what we, the direction we need to go. Get everything up for us, so we can have it all in front of us, okay? All right, so we're good. Uh, seventeen. Yeah, two weeks is enough? Two weeks. All right, all right, so let's move down to agenda item seven B, um, which is Southern City Lounge, uh, Cheryl Hunter and Jason Williams, twenty-five West Main Street, Space World, Georgia, thirty forty-five eight. Is there a motion to open the, uh, public hearing?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right, plain and insomniac.
No issue, Mayor.
Chief? No issue. Chief, there was a zoning issue related to this, I was hoping that Mike developed a example of that a little bit more, please.
Uh, yes, sir, chief, the certificate of occupancy has been issued on this establishment as of late last week, I just believe that the, uh, the comment sheet hadn't been updated.
Okay, thank you for this.
Thank you.
All right. Okay.
Uh, no issues, Mayor, counsel, there, there was an issue about them, I think, as a, um, just straight old premises consumption, consumption establishment. But with them, um, operating within the restaurant requirements, they are, uh, they are eligible for a, um, for a proximity waiver despite being within the typically prohibited proximity to, proximity to an alcohol treatment center.
Okay, all right, will we square it away now?
Yes, yes, everything, if, part of the approval of the license would also be the approval of that proximity waiver, maybe.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone here to speak for this request? Anyone here to speak against? I see that there's none, is there a motion to close the hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there, is there any discussion by counsel?
Ken, you said the original license for this was a liquor store, or a liquor firm, sorry, a bar?
Counselor Boyd. All those in favor? Hold on.
All right.
All right, okay. All right.
You said the original application was for what?
When they had first consulted, living councilman Boyham about the establishment going in, I'd spoken to Mr. Williams, and, um, and he'd also had discussion with the bar's office, and I believe the initial desire there was to convince us a bar, but, um, then it was brought forward with, um, they understood that it had to, it had to be a restaurant in order to, um, in order to get a license at that location. So they had to change their business model as a result of that in order to be compliant with the, and to remain in compliance with, um, with our code requirements for what, what a restaurant is.
And they have all the necessary, it belongs to a restaurant?
That is my understanding. I've not personally seen it, but I, they would have to have that, and of course, any, any, um, compliance check after the issuance of the license, if they're not in compliance with the resolve, you know, and not just a hearing in municipal court, but also before the convention, judge, police chambers.
Again, I'm, I'm not trying to be overregulative, but, you know, again, in the past, the problem we had with bars is that they pretended to be restaurants when they were actually bars. And so here we have somebody who comes in with a bar license and then, no, it'll be a restaurant. So am I, you know, running a restaurant is a, makes it a lot different than running a bar. So, you know, to, to switch up like that gives me a little bit of concern, but there's no concern for staff. I mean, I'll just say my concerns out loud, but again, biggest problem we had in, in the last decade with bars is that they were pretending to be restaurants, pretending to be something new.
And I, and I don't know about prior to this application, but he, he did not actually, there was not a bar established there, and I don't know that he's having quite since Southern City reported it. Um, I think it was just the initial business plan of figuring out what to do with this parcel, and thankfully, he, he made the calls early and hopefully changed his business plan accordingly as well.
Jeff, you're in a restaurant, so you're in a real bar, yeah?
I, I would like to think that our people in the city go, kind of move forward and be a little bit more optimistic, so if they work with staff, and staff said this is what they're going to do, and that's what my assumption is, Mayor, we're going to do. Uh, until approved and otherwise. Um, so with that being said, is there any further discussion for counsel? Seeing that there is none, is there a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Certainly.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any nays? Seeing as there's no, no nays, let's show the item seven B has passed. We will move down to agenda item eight, which is a public hearing in first reading, of a proposed ordinance twenty nineteen oh eight, a ordinance amending chapter thirty-eight of the State's Code Of Ordinances, adding Article Seven and establishing community redevelopment tax initiative program. Um, is there a motion to open this public hearing?
Certainly.
On the second?
Certainly.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right, Ken, if you will, give us some insight on this.
Mayor, counsel, this, uh, this, uh, proposed ordinance is brought forward based on prior motion regarding the, uh, what's collectively known as the light tax. What this is, is, is formerly known as the community redevelopment tax incentive program. The idea behind this, um, behind Article Seven is this is a hybrid carrot stick for credit to blighted properties within the community. On one hand, if one, once a property is deemed to be blighted, and that's, that's going to entail essentially it being abandoned. Uh, that can be either by requesting to look by, um, citizen to the code compliance officer or a code compliance officer. If the normal course is her duties identifying that blighted property, then the issue of whether or not it's blighted would be, uh, noticed under due process requirements and brought forward with consideration in municipal court. If the, um, if the residence is found to be blighted, um, a seven mils increase and add a lower taxes for the property would be imposed on the property. So that's the stick approach to, um, the light of property is that, is that for, for, once a property falls in there, the property tax burden increases significantly. However, there's also the incentive carrot side of that, which is that, um, if the property, should the property owner remediate the property, um, to the point of it no longer falling within the definitions in this article, um, at that point, for every, for every up to twenty-five thousand dollars, the owner would receive a, um, would receive a half reduction, a fifty percent reduction in their city assessed add a lower taxes. Uh, what that would mean is that should a, um, should a property owner spend twenty-five thousand dollars in documentable expenses to remediate the property, uh, for twenty-four, for anything up to twenty-five thousand dollars, they get one year of fifty percent reduction of property taxes. And, um, if it was over twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five to fifty, it would be two years of that reduced rate, and that would be available for up to four years, yet should the property have been, um, incurred costs of a hundred thousand dollars to remediate. So on one side, there's the higher taxes, and then on the other side is the reduced taxes, uh, should the property be, uh, fixed. And there are similar ordinances throughout the state. Um, this is, this is certainly not the unique to the city-state, but this was, um, this was a great business or whatever, uh, modification, not being appropriate as to the increase in mileage or as to the reduction in mileage, um, that would be available on the year.
Thank you, Ken. Uh, is there anyone here to speak for?
I, I support the measure, and I want to speak to it from the perspective of neighborhood revitalization. Uh, I think this becomes a useful tool to, to make. My name is Marcus Tool, and I work for Habitat Human in Philadelphia. Uh, I think this is very useful for neighborhood revitalization. It's one tool among many that we ought to be using. I think it also dovetails well with the GICH program that Space World's trying to get into. Uh, I hope this isn't the only tool that we use, but it is one that I think that should be in the GICH program that will incentivize property owners to cooperate with the other programs that we institute as part of that. I also think that should we not get into the GICH program, this is, this, you know, that's up to someone besides us, uh, that this is something that we can do now to begin correcting some of the property issues in Space World. As long as there's the provision there, it seems to be that we're not going to be displacing people who are in, uh, you know, low-end properties. I think this is, this is, this is a way to get these neighborhoods looking better, feeling better, remove some unsafe structures that are dangerous to people's kids, that attract rats, and other things that are harmful to communities. And I just think it would be a benefit, and it's one tool among many that we ought to be pursuing, but we should pursue this one. Thanks.
Is there anyone here to speak against?
I want to speak for her.
For her, all right.
Good morning. I'm Kathy Jenkins, I'm the executive director of Habitat Human. And we find that a lot of our properties happen to be near, even adjacent to some of these properties which would qualify as blighted properties. Having this, uh, tax incentive would help us. There are properties where we would like to build, but we have concerns about the neighborhood. And I think that moving forward and cleaning things up will help us to, to be able to build more homes for, for those low-income families as well.
Is there anyone else who speaks for? Is there anyone here to speak against? Seeing that there is none, uh, is there a motion to close the hearing?
Certainly.
Is there a second? Second, all those in favor?
All right.
All right, is there any counsel discussion?
A question from Ken. You mentioned that there's other cities in the state that you have this model, can you give us a couple names?
Um, I know that the city of Vienna and locally, uh, Savannah both have, um, it, it's, what this thing is new as it is, um, there aren't, there aren't really good results to, to look back on. It's, it's too novel of, um, of a program to really have any sort of definite reliable history on how it's worked in those other communities. But, um, it is, it is in compliance with, um, with, uh, state statute, and, um, it is becoming increasingly common within the state.
Thank you. Is it working?
Like, like I said, it's, it's, I, the property that's been identified in these communities, that this is a long-term.
And this is, this is, this is what I have a concern with, is that we, the city of Space World has a poverty rate that's above fifty percent, okay? Uh, and many of the times that we're living in this blighted property, one of the barriers that we, that these owners are facing is they may just not have the money to fix it. And so the wavelength that comes to me is that now they don't have the money to fix it, that, you know, they're probably barely paying their taxes and now it becomes double the tax. Uh, so that, that's a concern for my as well. Uh, another concern that I have is that if they fix it up, up to twenty-five, up to twenty-five thousand dollars, then we give them half off of their taxes, uh, for a year. Uh, problem I have with that is what about individuals that's been keeping their properties up the entire time? Uh, what is, what's the new baby? Uh, the next thing that, you know, I've talked to some experts in this field, and they are out of court, um, on whether the black tax works or not, and it's because it's fairly new. Um, but the concern that they have is that many of these properties, um, are properties that's owned by family, and it's family, and if they actually lose this property due to taxes, so now we're talking about families losing wealth in a city that already has a poverty rate of above fifty percent. Um, again, you know, me personally, counsel was at discretion, you know, to, to do what they, they decide. Me personally, I'd like to utilize, um, some experts in the field to come in, do some workshops with us, tell us exactly what the cause of this is. Uh, but again, you know, counsel's at, you know, very discretion, but I'm very concerned. And, you know, let the record show that the mayor is very concerned about doubling, uh, taxes on properties that's, um, already an area of, um, destruction. So is there any further discussion, my counsel?
Sure. Uh, I, I do know the, well, the councilwoman who's a fairly involved member of GMA, and that, um, she's at the city of Vienna, and she has said that there's a lot of success, and they're, they're, they've used it again more as a carrot than, than a stick. But I, but I do want to point out, Mayor, that we're, we're not looking to kick anybody out of their home. We're not looking to, if, if, if this is an owner-occupied property, or it's a rented property where there's actually residents, that's not what we're looking at. We are looking at historically vacant and ignored properties, typically owned by, uh, folks that can afford to just sit there and let it rot away. This is not about punishing poor people, this is not about taking property from families or anything along those lines. This is about people who can sit on a property for ten years and watch it crumble down, and because it's a good tax rate for them. And, you know, when, when those properties are affecting the properties around them, you're talking about poverty, and just like, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Jenkins from, uh, from Habitat said, you know, she's, it's, it's the halo effect. You know, she is, she's worried about putting properties next to these properties because they're just sitting there being ignored. So I, I certainly understand your concern about, uh, about poverty and, and, and punishing folks in poverty, that is not what this is about. This is not about hurting poor people or taking away their homes, or, or forcing somebody who can barely afford to fix the gutter to, to put a financial burden on them. That is not about this in any way, shape, or form. This is about those folks who are purposefully abandoning property and leaving it sit because it benefits them and it's affecting their community. So that is what this is about, and I'm all for even putting, you know, I called it the, the dirty dozen, or whatever you want to call it, I'm all for prioritizing and going after the top twelve, fifteen, or twenty properties. I mean, I think you identified a hundred and eighty-seven properties just in District Two and District One. I, I think there's a way we can set this up so that way we go after the, you know, again, the most impactful properties and have an impact. But we are, this is not about putting anybody further in poverty or punishing anybody because they can't afford to paint their house. That's not what this is about at all. So I just want to make.
One thing I do want to add, that I want, I do want to be clear with you, is the unintended consequences of public policy. You know, back in the nineties and late eighties, you know, every politician was rooting for the war on drugs. What did we get out of that? The world's largest prison population, and now here we are in twenty nineteen, where individuals was telling us back then that drug addiction is a health issue. Now, twenty nineteen, meth becomes, not meth, but, uh, the opioid crisis breaks out, we realize that it is a, what, a health issue. And so what I'm saying is, is that it may not be our intention to hurt those that's in this situation, but unintended consequences of public policy has generational effects that. effects that we, it takes us decades to get over. The only thing the mayor is advocating is that before we create this policy, let's bring in experts in this field to do a work session and teach us how to repopulate neighborhoods. That's what your mayor is saying. Um, so with that being said, um, is there, is there a motion, uh, to end discussion, uh, or to, to move forward with this proposed board?
Uh, yes, uh, make a motion to approve the first reading, uh, of your...
Okay. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Is it three to one or two to two? Pass which one?
I want to sustain it. Reason why I do, oh, but, no, I, I vote with the prediction. You're right. This is the first reading. So I'm going to vote in favor of it because this is the first reading. And you're right, you do have some, uh, you do need to get some more input. And I look forward to getting the experts to recommendation on this one. If they're, if they're good, I think it's, it uses a couple.
I'm not against it. I'm not against it at all. I think it's very much needed, but I do, I would like to hear from some, some other experts in the field.
Do you support your life approach, you prefer, but I think...
And I appreciate that very much.
You know, we appreciate, we know is that we got some, we have some rich, some rich resources that we have at our fingertips.
True.
Um, that we can, I mean, you put serious about this, let's get this work session together, let's sit down, discuss it, let them go over the best practices in this field, um, and then go from there. I mean, to me, that's just the intelligent thing to do.
We do two readings.
We do two readings, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Penny, who is new to all of us. Mr. Penny, do you have experience in this period in your previous, uh, duty?
Not, not with the blight tax. Uh, I, I do have experience with redevelopment. Uh, and man, I just want to share with council. Um, I got sort of tree reading, especially the funds being available to help with revitalization, depending on how many funds there are. Uh, but I, I do just want to share with council that, uh, obviously it's your job to, to, to develop the policy. It becomes my responsibility, staff responsibility to implement that policy. Uh, and, and I just want to make sure that, um, I have all the, the tools I need as far as staff is concerned. And that's why I just asked a question about, uh, whether it's two readings or is it, is it three readings? And so it's two readings because you could end up approving this before I actually have, uh, the opportunity to really review staffing to make sure that we have the tools we need to implement, um, the, 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 the ordinance. Uh, and that, that's my, that's my only concern. I just want to make sure that once you adopt it, I need to be able to make sure that we can actually, um, put it, put it in motion. And, and I need to have some time to, to, to work with staff to make sure we have the, the resources to make, to make this happen. And it wouldn't just be, and I just want to be clear, it's not just the blight tax. It's, it's all of, if we come into the GICH program, and even if we don't get into the GICH program, there are things that we need to be doing as a city as far as code enforcement, uh, and, and, and getting property owners to, to recognize they have deteriorated, dilapidated properties. And, and I just want to make sure that we have all those things in place. Uh, and so I'm not, I, I, I guess I'm, I'm more in line with, we do need to just look at, um, best practices. And this could be a tool, but I just want to make sure we have the resources that I can implement the policy once you, once you put it in place.
Hey, Mr. Penny, uh, um, can you, can you tell me if I'm wrong on this, but there's a substantial change between the first and the second reading that it reverts back to a first reading. So if there's any significant personnel changes in the field, you know, once you review this over the next couple of weeks, uh, DSA board members will be reviewing this. We're in, you know, I'm, I plan on giving it to the homeowners association, uh, let, let Habitat look it over and then whoever wants to look it over, we have it. If there's significant changes between the first and second reading, then it reverts back to a first reading. So, so we'll give you plenty of, plenty of time. Um, only, the only way we go from first to second is if there's fairly insignificant changes in language and that kind of stuff. But if we do something substantial, it would revert back to number one. So, so here you go, Mark.
And again, what I'm suggesting to the council is that we use state resources with experts in the field to find the best way to do this. If we're going to do it, let's do it right with experts in the field. Um, and the, and the resources are out there. That's the only thing that I'm advising council to do. Um, I am very concerned when we just create, we, I feel that we, and I understand the intent behind it, but if we're going to do it, let's do it the right way with all the information in front of us. Uh, if it's good policy today, it'll be good policy tomorrow. And I think that we're jumping the gun by not having a work session, by not doing anything to educate the council on blight tax, on the blight tax, uh, and not having some experts in the field sit down with us in a work session to discuss. That's what I'm cautioning. Uh, and so I do want, Councilman Jones, you move your abstain to moving it forward correctly without the work session. All right, so let's show that agenda item eight has passed with the three, two, one vote. Okay, we'll move down to agenda item nine, which is a public hearing in first reading of proposed resolution twenty nineteen thirty, a resolution of the American Council of the City of Spacewar to put in effect a six-month moratorium on issuance of conditional use variances in order to exceed city zoning occupancy limit, limits and commission a six months comprehensive study on the community residents and land use restrictions within the city. Um, is there a motion to open the hearing?
I'll move.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ken?
We need a public hearing.
It says public hearing in first week.
This is just a resolution, not a, not a board.
Sit down.
And this would just be to consider the resolution.
Resolution, right.
This is not a, um, this would actually be a hearing on the resolution.
Okay. All right.
It's not an ordinance change that doesn't follow the transparency ordinance. So, Mayor Council, choose to put it on the day if it's a different factor.
Okay. All right. All right, so signing that we do not need a public hearing for this, um, is there any discussion by council?
I think we've covered, but I mean, if anybody has any questions, I'm just, um, I'm concerned that we have a growing industry in our community and, you know, variances are supposed to be for variances, you know? They're supposed to be for unusual circumstances. And we've got thirty, forty of these facilities in town. These are not a variance anymore. This is a business. And, uh, I, I think, uh, especially considering our comprehensive plan says, you know, we want to maintain existing single-family residential neighborhoods. And when we're putting eight, ten, fourteen people in our house, you know, we, it's funny, we, we don't like it when it's six college students, but when we create a business, all of a sudden it's okay. So all I'm looking for is, uh, to allow staff time to, to look at this and whether to put an ordinance together, put some kind of guidelines together so that way we have some consistency because I have, you know, I have a lot of single-family neighborhoods up in my district concerned about the encroachment of these, uh, of these facilities in these residential neighborhoods. Not that they're not needed, that's, that's not my point. But, you know, single-family residents should be expected to live in a single-family neighborhood.
All right, 'cause, um, I just wanted to say that I feel, I, I agree with Councilman Moore that we do need to have a, but I, I feel this is a huge element prior to, that we need some others, some expertise, some of the areas that have definitely some addressed in, in how to approach the house.
So, sign, signing Councilman Jones' concern and Councilman Boynton's position, is there a motion to approve the resolution as is?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's show that agenda item nine has passed. Uh, we are down to agenda item ten. Uh, other business from city council, is there any other business that we need to address?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to ask, uh, Mr. Penny's got some comments. Mr. Penny sent us a letter between, uh, and all this about the emergency operations plan for the city. And we have, uh, a major event called Dorian. Uh, I have high confidence since this is the fourth year where we've had, uh, a major hurricane coming at us and we've been very successful in dealing with that. But that is really, I want to have Mr. Penny express his concerns about that and where we are about the city's capability to meet this right now. Thank you.
Mr. Duke and to Mayor, to the council, um, I'm not really concerned about, uh, the city's ability to meet the demand from storm. All we have been meeting since last week, we went to ELC on last Friday and met with the county and all the state officials. Uh, I do want to just make sure I'm clear. What I shared with you in the memo to, uh, the first thing I, I think I shared with you is that you had, we have, we have excellent staff and very experienced staff. The one concern I just raised is, um, a city should always have a written plan for emergency operation. Uh, and so sometimes it's just a matter of all those practices have to be documented on paper because staff, over, over time, staff changes. Uh, and even though the county, the county will always have responsibility for emergency operation. And that's throughout all of Georgia and that's throughout all of North Carolina. They are the folks that the Theds and the state look to. But each municipality has a responsibility to be prepared for its own recovery, uh, after storm. So it doesn't mean that we aren't, uh, we aren't prepared, but we also need to have it documented so that as city managers change, as staff changes, they can always just go to that plan and they know how to roll out the emergency operations center. We have to have our own emergency operations center because you have thirty-two thousand citizens that you're responsible for each and every day. And when we have a hurricane that, that comes in, uh, we have to know how we're going to deploy our employees, our police officers, our public work staff, our warden sewer staff. And so it's just a matter of just documenting. Uh, we need to know when we need to, uh, have a curfew. If the mayor has implemented a curfew, all of that needs to be in the plan. And it doesn't mean that we don't have it. Uh, all we're saying is your city manager likes to have it documented so that there's little chance. And so it's, um, uh, Mr. Boynton probably just, um, I always believe, uh, if, if you, if you don't have a good plan, then you're probably in, in preparation for, uh, a, a, a good failure somewhere down the line. So I just want to, I just want to document it. And that's the only thing. Staff is very, very capable. Uh, and Tim Graham has already jumped on, um, uh, on this matter and has already identified a staff person that will be working with, uh, all of our departments to make sure we have a plan in place, a written plan in place. Uh, and, and it's not just hurricanes. It's any occurrence that might occur in the city, uh, that, uh, I mean, if we had a situation, heaven forbid, I'm not going to say it. We've seen things go, happen across the country and we have to know how to respond, uh, when those crises occur. And the plan is just a matter of that, just one that can be rolled out for many, many.
Thank you, Mr. Penny. I'm very reassuring to the citizens of Spacewar given we are a tier-one evacuation zone. All our hotels are booked full for the next few nights because the evacuation is mandatory. So thank you for that explanation.
Thank you. All right, in front of the council, seeing that there are none, are there any statements? All right, are there any comments from the public? Seeing that there are no comments from the public, um, at this point in time, it's considerations of motions to enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters with Spacewar in architectural evaluation in accordance with OCGA fifty dash fourteen dash, did we, B? Um, says an emotion for executive session.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.